We're good. All right. Calling the meeting to order. Can I have a motion to enter? No, that's executive. So can I have a meeting to motion to bring us back into public session? First Josephine, second Noreen. All right. First up is approval of the minutes for our December 17th, 2024 meeting. Can I have a motion? First Grace, second Josephine. Is there any questions or comments? All in favor? Minutes are approved. We do not have a treasurer's report. So next up is recognition of community. Dr. Hamilton.
Yes, this evening we have a presentation by our junior senior high school principal, Mr. Hoser, recognizing students for again somehow.
Evening everyone. I am pleased to inform you that Edgemont Senior Kento Hung has been selected as one of the top 300 scholars in the 2025 Regeneron Science Talent Search. Scholars were chosen based on their outstanding research, leadership skills, community involvement, commitment to academics, creativity in asking scientific questions, and exceptional promises to them leaders. The 300 scholars hail from 200 American and international schools, home schools across 33 states, Washington DC, Hong Kong, Malaysia, and Switzerland. Congratulations to Kento, to our science scholars teacher, Ms. Stardis, and to our entire science department. Thank you.
Okay, and Madam Clerk, I understand we have a member of the community who wishes to speak?
Yes, we do.
Okay. While he comes up, recognition of community includes the opportunity for community members to offer their thoughts to the board on any issues in the district, including those on the agenda. The board can't and won't respond to any questions asked in public comment. We have a specific agenda for this meeting. However, if warranted, the board will follow up on issues raised during public comment outside of the meeting or potentially add it to a future agenda if there are relevant updates for the community. You may speak for up to three minutes and Jennifer will give you a verbal warning 30 seconds before the end of your time so you can wrap up your remarks. So if you would introduce yourself, please.
Thank you to the board and superintendent, assistant superintendent. My name is Lucas Chafi. I'm a parent of two children at Sealy Place. And I would propose that in a future board meeting, there could be a new topic we could add about whether we could enfranchise our 17 year olds in the district to vote in district elections. This is something I brought up last month and it'd be great to hear the board discuss it and think about whether this would be helpful for the district. The general thinking is you've got to be 18 to vote for the bond or the budget or in other elections. And here we are. We heard some great presentations last month about civic engagement. And I think this would be an excellent way that our students could lean in. I speak tonight as a parent, but also as the co-founder of the Westchester Youth Congress. This is something that I founded five years ago with four other students. One of them, Avic Agarwal, who was an outstanding Edgemont student. There's about 20, 25 students in any given year. So over 100 kids have gone through the program. And they do really fantastic community service projects. And they're particularly excited about this one. So I anticipate we'll be getting about 10,000 signatures for a statewide legislative change to allow districts that are interested in letting their students vote one year prior to where they're currently allowed. That those districts could opt in. And it would be great to coordinate with the board to hear what considerations would be important. Is it practical, for example? And other considerations. So if anyone on the board or the district could reach out to me and we could start to coordinate, I would really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Anyone who came in who wants to speak? Nope. Okay. Then we move on to acceptance of gifts. Dr. Hamilton.
Good evening again, everyone. It is my pleasure to present the following gifts for your acceptance from the Edgemont Junior Senior PTSA, the amount of $275 to the Edgemont Junior Senior High School for Edgemont Student Activity Fund for the Student Delictive Arts. From the Edgemont PTA, the following gifts for $3,990 to Greenville for the Mobile Head Earth Dome Project. $2,560 to Greenville for ICAM for fifth grade students. $300 to Sealy Place for the Greenberg Nature Center, Meet the Animals. To Sealy in the amount of $2,220 to their undercurrent designs, when business says day and clay. To Sealy Place in the amount of $975 for storytelling. $2,000 to Sealy Place for authors on books with a visit from Sean and Gans. Grant and the amount of $1,005.99 from the Edgemont School Foundation to Edgemont Junior Senior High School for ICAP program.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept these gifts? First Josephine, second Noreen. Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor? All right. Again, thank you to the PTA, the PTSA, and the Edgemont School Foundation for continuing to make these generous gifts, all of which go to activities and experiences that benefit students. We are grateful for partnerships with our community organizations, which are ultimately thanks to the support of our community. So next we have board committee reports. I have for the communication committee and the finance committee. Josephine, do you want to go first?
The communications committee met on January 7th. It was a regularly scheduled meeting with Josh Summer and Stu Shinsky of Focus Media. The committee's role is to provide advisory level oversight of the district's communications with the community. And we discussed the March issue of the Edge Magazine and the modification of future holiday related emails for the DEIB Committee to provide more meaningful descriptions. We also discussed an AI forum scheduled for 6:30 PM on February 6th that will be moderated by Dr. Hamilton, as well as a community forum unaffiliated with the district scheduled for tomorrow regarding the turf fields included in the bond package passed in October. We briefly discussed the results of the communications survey, which reflected that our current approach is generally on target. An email will be drafted to share the results and next steps with the public. Lastly, we discussed the On the Edge podcast. Dr. Hamilton most recently interviewed the recent superintendent for a day, Joseph Vodicon. And the feedback has been quite positive. Dr. Hamilton is considering interviewing a teacher next as a student and an administrator have been featured so far.
Thank you. And Noreen.
So on December 19th, the finance committee met with Brian, Paul, and Gina Lanza and Dr. Hamilton. And we discussed the financial reports, which happily to say that we have a positive outlook for our fiscal year. Our revenues are projected to exceed the budgeted amounts. And we anticipate a surplus in the appropriation budget. This surplus is expected to result in a net increase of over $810,000 in the fund balance, which further strengthens our financial position. We also discussed our reserve status, including the TRS, ERS, and Sertiary. And those are nearing their cap limits. Given this, given this, our external auditors recommended considering the establishment of additional reserves by year end to maintain fiscal flexibility and sustainability. And one specific option under consideration is a reserve for settlement obligations, which would provide necessary support for any future settlements. When we also discussed our interest earnings. Happy to report that we are benefiting from very strong interest earnings due to both a higher fund balance and favorable interest rates. We are projecting to have a total interest earnings to exceed $1 million by the end of the year. We also discussed our tax base growth factor, which directly supports our tax cap estimations and planning. And I think we'll hear about that more in a future presentation. We also talked about our debt service outlook. Looking ahead, which we'll hear about shortly, is our first debt service payments are scheduled to happen in the 2526 school year. So with these significant payments are expected to happen over the subsequent two years. So we're planning to utilize reserves strategically to offset the maximum allowable tax levy during this period, ensuring our minimum impact on taxpayers. Lastly, one of the important things that we talked about that could directly benefit our students was the allocation of the surplus and the Joseph Carl Bowman death benefit. The committee discussed and reviewed the possible uses of these funds. And we've determined to utilize these funds to support playground replacement projects and repairs district wide. So every school, you know, every campus will see this happening. And we also look to purchase new MacBooks for the high school digital arts program and purchase new core server and replacement wireless access points, Wi-Fi controllers here at the junior senior high school to upgrade our network infrastructure. With that, that's my report.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, I don't have a president's report this week, so passing it off to you, Dr. Hamilton, for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. This evening, we will provide some important updates that reflect our ongoing commitment to transparency, progress, and sound fiscal planning for the Edgemont School District. First, Brian will give a brief update on the progress of Bond 2024, which has been an exciting initiative rooted in collaboration and designed to meet the involving needs of our students and provide the resources to meet district goals. Following Brian, we will have our director of facilities, Ray Rinda, who will provide a comprehensive update on the work of the facilities department, including key projects that are underway and those scheduled in the near future. And then lastly, Brian will come back and take us through our overview for the 2526 budget development process, including the timeline, budget priorities, and specific focus of the facility's budget to ensure our resources are aligned with our district initiatives. These discussions tonight highlight our shared commitment to maintaining a safe, inspiring, and resource-rich environment for our students and our staff. And more importantly, to demonstrate our alignment with the newly approved board goals and our efforts to strive for excellence. So Brian, great.
So in our monthly update, in terms of the ongoing work for the bond, happy to report, we've made some considerable steps since when we spoke in December. At tonight's, during tonight's consent agenda, you'll see approval of updated contract with our architects at Fuller and D'Angelo. I'm noticing now that we did not remove the Triton one, but we'll have to take that out of the consent agenda. Unfortunately, we were not able to have that contract completed and executed by today.
That's number five?
I think so, yes. Big step for us is to have that contract established. I know I spoke with the board about this previously. But we now have a distinct contract with Fuller and D'Angelo as it relates to their bond work, separate from their architectural design work that they do for us on a regular basis annually in the district. And that will, the language included in that contract will serve as a template for much of the work that we do going forward. In terms of status update, phase one of the project, which would be EHS and Greenville Cafeterias. These are on schedule for a January bid, maybe early February, the latest, with contract award in March and construction starting in June. We got some critical notifications from the state over the last two weeks as it relates to our approvals on those projects and receiving confirmation, which gives us the go ahead to really move forward at this point in time. Phase two, the big work that's happening between Ray, our facilities, John, not this yet, sorry. Our team at Triton and our architects at Fuller and D'Angelo is working on packaging. So making sure that the packaging matches timelines to be able to accomplish as much of the work as possible within the school schedules, while also considering and trying to ensure that we are getting early aid on the projects as quickly as we can. There's a cap that your threshold you must pass in order to be eligible for early aid on the projects. And so if you package them too small, we run the risk of not getting the early aid flowing as quickly as we need. The packaging designs are going to impact the architectural design prioritizations. So obviously there's a bandwidth that the firm can handle at a time. And so as we work to refine those packages, that'll help determine where their personnel and time will be spent to get us to completion. Most significantly, we got a cash flow report from Triton, which serves as the basis for helping us understand the points in time we'll need given expenditures to hit our books and therefore be able to work backwards and determine a funding plan for that. With that cash flow document, we've shared that with our financial advisors at Capital Markets. And the two of us have met on two occasions to review and ensure that we have alignment. We've made the decision that my recommendation at this point would be for us to bond the full amount that we are authorized for right now, which would be the costs for the phase one projects of EHS and Greenville Cafeterias, which comes to just over $12 million. We are not permitted to bond for anything more than what you have SED approval on. The only question would be is do we want that whole amount or are we seeking a smaller amount? Given, looking at the cash flow document, we would anticipate expending those funds within 12 months. And so it would make sense to try to bite all of that off in one bond issuance. Right now, our advisors are working backwards from a date that I've given them, which is mid-March, primarily March 15th, with the hope that we would have our closing date on a bond issuance by that time. The goal would be is to be able to get the actual debt service amounts to be embedded into the budget by the time we present to you our final administrative proposal. We do have some projections that I'm going to hand out to you now that have come from Capital Markets, our advisors. So they've created this projection document based off of $12 million, $12,143,481. Borrowed 15 years, which is the probable number of years that we would receive aid on this project. And they're establishing kind of the going rate for districts that are in the double A rate market. And they've added 25 basis points as of their January 8th estimations, given some of the volatility right now in the bond market. Happy to report rates are still relatively low. We're looking at about 3.5% as an estimate right now. And really the number you want to look at is the first number in the fiscal total column. That 1,40,636 would be if based on this, these criteria, that would be our total debt service obligation in the 2526 school year. So as of right now, I have that as the estimate in our budget. We would benefit tremendously from getting the actual figures and getting that bond issuance established by March. I anticipate meeting again with Alex Kerr within the next week to two weeks as he plans to present a schedule for us. We'll then coordinate and collaborate with our bond council to make sure that we have all of the necessary elements from their area of expertise in line. And we'd be working towards that March date. Prior to that, there'll be a rating review by Moody's, which is fairly extensive. We went through that when we issued a bond anticipation note. The work prior to an actual bond issuance is a little bit more in depth and detailed. I have no expectation that the ratings would be decreased. In fact, I think that we have an opportunity and a possibility that our credit rating may increase based on our current financial position, which would be tremendously helpful. In terms of debt service, I think I'll hold the major details, like what's the difference in the delta between where we were at last year and where we anticipate being next year for our presentation on the topic. It's coming up soon. And we'll speak to that shortly as we talk about the bond, the budget presentations that will be forthcoming.
So you anticipated one of my questions. Do we have any questions from the board?
Can you just clarify? On the payment schedule, what is that interim interest payment that's due, for example, March of 2026? What is that calculated?
Sure. So the way that we, we have a couple of options. So the first thing to note is that once you close, you can, you have to make your full interest principal and interest payments within 12 months. But you can structure the way that the interest payment comes in a couple of different ways. You can pay the interest in six months. Or you can pay the interest at the 12 month mark with the principal. The only plan that I, or the only proposal I've given you here would be us making interest payments at the six month mark. So if you look, that would be 915 for $209,000. Sorry, the way this is written, the principal hits there for $633,000. Interest payment of $209,000 gets us to 843. And then the second payment would complete the 12 year annual amount. Just interest of 197, 627 to bring us to that total number. The other model that he provided for us was to put it all in the backend. Doing that, if you look over the life of the, the total note, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars difference in terms of our obligation. So where we want to make our payment as early as we can while still fitting our revenue, the rate at which revenue comes into the district. I asked to not make the full payment in September because we haven't received our taxes yet. We get our largest sum of school taxes in October, usually around the second week. And so it's not that we have a cash flow challenge, but we do have to move monies around to make a large payment like that before the taxes come in. And so that was the largest amount that we thought we could take on while meeting our own cash on hand at the time, while still meeting the requirements of the 12 month principal and interest contributions.
Heather, Amy? I just had one thing you could clarify. You talked about early aid. Am I correct that that's aid that you get before you've completed the project?
Correct. So it'll allow us to receive a small fraction of the aid that is entitled to the district prior to those cost reports being submitted. It's not a huge amount, but knowing that we're going to have the, the challenge of having multiple years of debt service on the books without full aid flowing on the backend, anything would be helpful.
Sure, sure. Okay. Thank you. Okay, I guess we're ready for Ray now, right?
Mr. Rinda.
As Ray comes up, I'll just, you know, share, Ray, it's been hard at work with his facilities team over the course of every year, but I think in particular this year, and I want to just give some kudos to him. He and I have done several walks over the last few months to really try to identify many areas where we see low hanging fruit that could really benefit the facilities, just the look, the aesthetic, the feel of the place where it's simple and easy to do so. And his work in addressing these has been rapid and really thorough. And so I'm very thankful for that. Tonight's a great opportunity for Ray to share some of the work that's been done and to celebrate the work of the district.
Good evening all. This is a good opportunity for me to thank my staff, our administrative team, the Board of Education for allowing us to do all these projects. And thank you for hiring me. Each year I'm humbled that you've hired me. So thank you very much. So we're going to look at 24, 25 year updates. Typically, every year we do a little bit of preventive maintenance. We've completed the tennis courts, the track, the bathroom here at the arts building at the high school fencing. We've installed new lockers. But you know, we did district wide safety tree pruning, bottle filling stations throughout the district. So here you look at the high school. Refinished floor. Typically, every year we refinish the floors. We do this at each and every gymnasium in the district. Sidewalk repairs at the high school. Whenever there's a dangerous condition, we address it. Here is the high school in progress, the track. You see on the left-hand side, the old track, it was starting to wear. So we decided we needed to repair the tracks. So on the right-hand side, you'll see them starting to prepare. They clean it in preparation. They resprayed the track. It's very dark at that point. And as it cures, it turns a little bit lighter and then we put our new lines on. High school tennis courts, they were in pretty bad shape last year. These are actually good pictures of some of the cracks. Some of the cracks were actually wider and deeper. But this is the condition we discovered when we went up to look at the track, I mean, the tennis courts. Here's our staff working on the tennis courts. We can use an acrylic material to fill some of the deeper holes. And we use like a caulking material to fill the minor cracks. You could see hard at work. If you look at the pictures, you could see some overgrown trees. Here is the completed tennis courts when we were done. We actually finished the probably 15 minutes before the kids were ready to practice on this particular day. I was like, oh my God. I was like, Anthony, can you give me a few more minutes? He was like, yeah, Ray, no problem. I'll figure it out. I was like, oh my God, we gotta finish. Thank God it was hot out and it dried very quickly. So the students were able to practice. We had the tennis nets rolled up, just ready to drop them. So we were ready. Here is the bathrooms in the arts building, which is the business office. Vintage bathrooms per se, a little bit older tiles. But nevertheless, we had the charge to improve and let's make it look better. So you see our wonderful team, they stripped down all the walls of all the tile. You could see in the right-hand picture, there's a laser. They actually used a laser to install each and every row of the tiles. And they're just tremendous. I gotta tell you, this team is amazing. This is the finished product. They've done it probably better than the contractors could actually do it. I gotta be honest with you. But these are the bathrooms right now in the business office. Safety fence installation. If you're coming up Old Army Road, actually a parent contacted me and they said, hey, Ray, you think you could take a look at the rock condition as you come up Old Army Road? So I said, oh yeah, let me go take a look. Went out and looked, it's very dangerous. So we installed the fence there to protect students. People just walking could accidentally stumble onto the rocks and get hurt. So we put that fence in rather quickly. New lockers in the D building and the admin building. The lockers that were there were 12 inches wide and kind of short. You really can't get much into the locker. So we installed 15 inch wide lockers, a little bit taller. So there's a little bit more room for the students now. Matt was troubleshooting the lights on Blanford Field. We had a power outage. Our first game, no lights. What you, what you don't see there is Danny in the background on Musco lighting and me frantically saying, oh my God, we gotta get this done. Dr. Hamilton, what's the lights done? He wasn't updating. But anyway, Matt was troubleshooting. He figured it out. He toned everything out. He tested everything and we found out exactly which breakers tripped. So we figured that out. In the D building on the right-hand side, we had a roof leak into the classroom, not a good thing, but nevertheless, we repaired the roof. Andy and Fabian drilling a hole, looks like a simple hole, but that auger is very strong. God forbid you hit a rock. You need two strong people holding the end of that. If you hit a rock, the torque on it, it's going to knock you out. Here's the safety netting that was installed. Again, a parent brought it to my attention that the kids were on Greenville Playground and a lacrosse ball flew in and almost hit one of the kids. Immediately we jumped into action. I went to Brian, Mr. Brian, I need a little money. So whatever you need, Ray. So we ordered the fence and we installed it and it's up right now. Bottle filling stations district wide, that was our initiative, clean water for everybody, wonderful filtered water, probably better than Poland Springs. You see Andy working in the showcase there, Bailey Fitz, but he was working in there. And Dr. Hamilton identified this as one of the first projects when he came to Edgemont. He said, right, that's terrible. I said, look, it's all cracked. He says, you gotta replace that. So we replaced it. You see the new one on the right-hand side. The press box, the roof was leaking, the insides got all wet. Our team, they could do it all. They go from roofing to HVAC to plumbing to tile to electrical. I mean, we have some team. So anyway, we refurbished the press box. Sealy Place Lower Gym, really bad shape, flooring, even with our best efforts, the floor needed some repairs. We repaired in the front, you see that big patch. It was really bumpy and dangerous. You see patches all over the gym. I didn't show all the pictures, but we replaced a bunch of boards. The vendor came in, he stripped the floor down, all the way down to the bare wood. He put his first coat of polyurethane down, then the lines, and then three additional coats on the top right. And then you see the beautiful finished product at the bottom. So each year now we go in, we strip it down. And then you see the beautiful finished product at the bottom, so each year now we go in, we strip it down, just the top coat. And then we resurface it, no need to go to the bottom coats anymore. Another one of Dr. Hamilton's initiatives, we have to get LED signs, I mean, look at that board out there, that's like. I don't even know, it's like from Happy Days, but anyway. We, each school now has an L, almost, almost every school, Sealy has it, the high school has it, in progress. Completed here at Sealy. Last year I left off Sealy with just the baseball diamond because we hadn't got to it yet. So this year we completed it, renovated the field, we put in a nice mix of clay that is playable. The clay there before was somewhat sandy and just really wasn't conducive to, you know, playing on. Sealy Place New Wing Windows, this project was in the queue probably before I started. So I took it over and we got approval from the state. And we executed the project, new windows were installed, the new wing, new doors, beautiful double hung windows. Excellent. When I first started again, the flagpole at Greenville was in really bad shape, so we painted it temporarily. Then you see we installed it this year, a new flagpole. This is the current condition of the Greenville Library and there's other windows associated with this project. And I'll show you on a drawing next page. This was the condition of the tennis courts, really bad shape, again, we closed them down for safety reasons. Here you'll see the library windows are getting replaced, I'm gonna step away from. Library windows are being replaced. Classrooms to the left, to the right, and forward, which is very short, sorry. But up here, four door windows, and then there's two classrooms on the interior we couldn't get to financially this year, but. We're going to include it in phase two, the way we structure our projects is with alternates. It gives us the ability to go up and down and and manage, you know, how much we can do or. What we can spend on these projects, so essentially it gives us the ability to. Go as far as we can and whatever we can't do, we can pick it up in the next piece, because there's a phase two of this, which is going to take place. Probably in a year and a half. We have ongoing projects, one of Dr. Hamilton's initiatives with the Edgemont School Foundation. The auditorium renovation project, it's actually started, it's been awarded. We're in the submittal phase right now, so we'll be doing some. I guess work over the breaks to pull wire and prepare. In preparation for when school lets out, then we'll go, you know, full blast, we're going to put new carpets in the front of the pit area. New wall sconces, new theatrical lighting, renovate the projection booth. Playground restorations at the high school, there's three little playgrounds just. Outside of the track area that are going to be restored. Ceiling tower replacement at various classrooms throughout the high school. Fencing leading to the athletic field. Phase one paving, there's going to be a phase two down the road. Sealy Playground Equipment, additional card access points. At Greenville, the tennis courts, we're working on right now. The library window project, right now we're in. The submittal phase, which means they're submitting the products to us, we're reviewing them, we're going to give them the approval, we give it back to the contractors. They order and then we'll start changing out the windows. Basketball court fencing. Playground renovations, we're going to do a couple of walkways there that are in need of repair. And we're going to put a new LED sign there, and that'll be the last school that gets an LED sign. Every five years, the state requires the school districts to do what's called the Building Condition Survey, commonly known as the BCS. The last one was completed in twenty twenty. The new one will be completed by, needs to be completed by December thirty first of twenty twenty five. And once we complete that BCS, it's a various review of all of our facilities. We come up with a five year financial plan and that leads us to the future. Questions?
Before we just turn it back to that, on on the building condition survey, you may remember in past years when we've done the facility. Review to look back on things, we've also then taken a step forward and. Prepared a spreadsheet that would indicate kind of where things fell on a five year plan. We made the decision not to produce that this year, given that we're in now in the calendar year where we need to complete the new building condition survey. It would be, we wouldn't be taking any action before that report would come. And so it makes sense for us to kind of pause, let that report be produced and let that be the foundation of the capital work going forward. I will share that if you do recall that spreadsheet, it outlined all the areas that we deemed to be critical, we put priority. Levels in terms of safety versus need or want. And we put the funding source, whether it be the Capital Reserve, operating budget or the bond. In preparing this presentation with Ray, we did take a look back on that document. And it's really impressive how much we've accomplished, so much of it has been done ahead of schedule. And so I'm really happy to report the the status of that. I think that we're going to find that many of the items that we had deemed to be important from the last building condition survey have been addressed. And we'll be taking a look at some new things, there's going to be some big ticket items that will come. Boilers, major infrastructure that we'll have to take a look at and how how we'll best fund and plan for that. But it's it's exciting to get this report and get that work done to kind of give us direction and be able to plan appropriately for the next few years.
And and I I want to just take an opportunity to first of all, thank you, Ray, for an excellent presentation. A plus. And also kudos to Brian and Ray for addressing some of our facility needs, as you know, I've been talking about. Trying to get the district in a place where we can address some of the much needed facility. Concerns that we have in our district and we're getting there, slow drips, but we're getting there, so. Thank you for your continued commitment to gnaw away at that and.
You're welcome.
indulging all of my little projects.
Well, you know, I embrace it because we we need it honestly, we need it, and we're moving forward slowly and we're progressing, we're excited about. Going through the bond process and starting to work, we're going to make a lot of progress in the next few years, honestly.
Good, thank you.
So I'll start down here this time, Tommy, Heather, you have any? Let me echo the thanks, you've got, I I actually look forward to this presentation because it's so great to get the opportunity to. Acknowledge, recognize and acknowledge the work that your team does, you've got an extraordinary team. That works incredibly hard and it's just so obvious how much pride they take in their work and so thank you for that, but also. You know, the the skills that your team brings, I mean, it's a huge benefit to the district that. Your guys are able to do and women are able to do this work instead of us having to. Bring in people from outside and that's just another thing that that I'm not sure people necessarily recognize, and so I wanted to acknowledge and thank you for.
Oh, you're welcome, there there's many instances that are behind the scenes that. People will never know, except Dr. Hamilton, obviously, for example. All of last week when we had that cold, cold weather, we were experiencing terrible. Trouble keeping some areas of our buildings warm, in particular the APR. So our team would come in early, they would manually get the lift. Go up, open the dampers, close the dampers, just to get people in, I mean, this is all taking place behind the scenes. When we find out, we're looking at the air temperature, it's a hundred and twenty nine degrees, how come it's not coming in here? Well, let's go up and check, we take a probe, we stick it into the ductwork, literally take the ductwork apart. It's sixty six degrees, so we know that the problem now lies on the roof, it's not, you know, a thermostat issue. It's on the roof, because we're making that temperature, so freezing, we go up, we take apart the units. We're looking at the dam, oh, look, this is the damper, the return damper, let's prop this up, oh, let's close this one a little bit. We make it happen, this is the team that, this is the dream team, I gotta tell you, we got the dream team here. So I'm I'm very happy to work with this team and the administrative team and my office assistant Marina, so thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
The support.
Good job.
Thank you.
Lastly, Brian, if you could just walk us through twenty five, twenty six budget.
Great, the perfect segue for us is is today really kicks off the budget season for us, we've delayed it this year. A couple of things to keep in mind, we've been seeking feedback from the board in terms of what's the presentation, how have the presentations in the past been received? Are there any changes or modifications you'd like to see? And there's been a few recommendations been provided, we're going to take a little latitude with that as well and and try something different tonight. And hope that if it goes well, that will help facilitate the rest of our presentations. And if not, we're happy to pivot and go in another way. So purpose of my presentation today is twofold, one, to talk a little bit about the budget development process. Dr. Hamilton, at our last Board of Education meeting, spoke about the Budget Defense Rounds. That are currently ongoing, we've had three to date. And I think we have three more scheduled in the next seven to eight school days. Been really great, I think now that everybody has a sense of what's expected of them. And have gone through this a few times, they're really tight and well organized. So as we progress through that process in the background, we're preparing for really six presentations at the board level. And you'll see that on the document that we've created here called Developing the Twenty Five, Twenty Six Budget. So tonight's first presentation is the Facilities Budget, I'm going to give a very brief overview, it's early to to really plant our flag on all of the elements. But we'll talk about the key components that are driving it. On February eleventh, we'll talk revenues, debt service, reserves and the tax levy. Two of those items are mentioned previously during the committee reports, one will be about the maximum allowable tax levy that does relate to the growth factor. And the second being debt service, which I spoke to, which we hope to have a better sense of by that time in terms of actual obligations for next year. Fast forward to later in that month, in February twenty fifth, Building Principals, Dr. Moselli will be talking. To the board about staffing needs and the school budgets, as well as Anthony DeRosa to discuss athletics. On March eleventh, we'll be taking a look at the department, the district level department budgets, so Curriculum Instruction Assessment. People Personnel Services, Technology and Steam. And on March twenty fifth, Dr. Hamilton and I will make the administrative budget proposal. That would be the final kind of culminating presentation that gives the total proposed allocations on the revenue and the appropriation sides. And that work will then prepare us for the budget work session, which will be held on April eighth. In the past, if I was to be honest, I I took my goal in these budget presentations was to provide you. With anything that you could possibly need and answer questions that you have, or you may not know that you have yet. This year we're going to try to take a different stance if if it continues to work effectively. To give more of a high level overview, provide opportunities where you can dive deeper to the level which you need. And then think about that as a way to help you generate the questions that you need answers or greater information on at that budget work session. I'm sure that at each of our presentations, there will be some questions that arise on the spot. Or in your own preparations in reviewing the documents, but I'm sure there are also other times that you go home after the meeting and feel like others. With upon, with further consideration, I have more questions about that. And it's our hope to be able to create that dialogue at the budget work session. By providing you the information to kind of get to those needs for yourself. So with that, I'll turn to the second document, Jonathan, could you bring up the facilities one please? So rather than making a presentation on a slide deck, we're going to try to do this to the one pager. And use this as a landing board for the information that would help you kind of dig a little deeper. If you go to the one that's posted on Board Docs, the links that you'll see at the bottom of the page are active and will bring you to some of the other documents that you see. I'm making this presentation tonight, but please know Ray and I have collaborated on this, Ray's made his own proposals to me. I've done a deep dive into his numbers, we've gone back and forth on a few items and tried to plant our flag on this as our initial proposal. The proposal for next year would be a budget of two point eight, one, two million dollars. That's exclusive, that does not include contractual obligations, so salaries, benefits, personnel costs, that will all be discussed under the staffing lens. When we have our meeting about staffing. And that as an overarching idea is true about each of the budget presentations that you'll see. So when the building principals come and speak about their building budgets. When Dr. Roscoe speaks about the curriculum office, they're not including the staffing costs, we'll look at that in a different bucket. You'll see on the right hand side, there's the five year trend in terms of the facilities budget. Back in twenty twenty two, fiscal year twenty two, so that would be twenty one, twenty two. The budget was two point three, four million, we're looking at two point eight million now. The budget to budget increase from last year to or from this year to next is proposed to be two point three percent. Directly below that, you'll see a pie chart that shows the distribution of expenses by category. And I'll really just point out two that I deem to be major contributors. They represent a little bit less than fifty percent of the overall budget. And that's utility costs and building and grounds improvements. Many of the other elements you see in their supplies, these are consumables, there's a lot of consumables in the facilities world. Whether it be cleaning supplies, sanitary supplies or otherwise. We have considerable costs that we can control to an extent under the overtime and substitutes. So we have included that here as though it is personnel related, that's something that we can kind of manage a little bit more than the contractual obligation. But to Jennifer's point, much of that overtime is really dedicated to our our own staff. Who are doing a lot of the work for us and saving us considerable money. Under the utilities heading, the proposed budget for next year is just over eight hundred and thirty two thousand dollars, which is a two percent increase. On the current year. It's kind of like a little ebb and flow, there are some utilities that we anticipate to see pretty considerable savings and others that are far more volatile. That we're going to see increases in, in particular, natural gas, we'd be hard to predict right now. So we're estimating an increase anywhere between ten and thirty percent. On the year, luckily for us, we don't have huge natural gas expenses in the buildings, the primary source of heat is oil for us. And so the materiality of that is is reduced by that. And secondly, we have to, our our electrical costs have continued to rise at an incredibly rapid rate. In the twenty twenty five year, so we get service rates by calendar year, not fiscal year. So we've turned the leaf to twenty twenty five, we are seeing already, we've known this, it's been projected, a nine percent increase in the service cost alone. When you factor in the twenty five and the estimated expenses for the last six months. Of the fiscal year in twenty six, we're predicting a seven point seven five percent increase in electricity consumption. Sorry, service costs. On the other side of things, we have a whole lot of latitude in terms of what this number is. We have four lines in the district, one is buildings improvement, and then we have grounds improvement at each of the three schools. Last year we budgeted four hundred and sixty six thousand dollars and we're proposing that we keep that flat. This this. Bucket best categorizes what you just saw in the presentation a moment ago. This is utilized for various district wide projects and improvements, it's not necessarily things that we have. Line itemized now. But it is more for things that we may not be able to plan for, emergency needs, developing needs. In areas where we see opportunities for growth in the district. In the past few years, funding on these have helped address several projects, including field restorations. I think you just saw in Ray's presentation, the Sealy Place Field. We did some field restoration work on the baseball and softball diamonds at DHS. HVAC upgrades, including the the unit that services this building. Library and cafeteria classroom builds, we created new classrooms with funds from this. Fencing throughout the district, environmental remediations, bathroom renovations, we saw one example of that tonight. I should say, and incidental replacements, to name a few. When I say we have great latitude over that and and why, I'll say the facilities budget would be not an approved finalized one at this point. We want to see how the rest of the numbers come in to determine the balance between our revenue, expected revenues and expected expenditures. If there's a need to adjust the budget accordingly, this is one area that we would go to to make necessary adjustments if need be. There's additional information that I provided for each of the board members as backup, you'll see a line by line analysis. I won't go through this to keep consistent with how I started the presentation tonight. But an opportunity to review and identify any areas of concern or where you have questions. As we move further along in the process, both either tonight or later in any of the budget presentation meetings. For each department, I will provide for you one of these documents, because it does give you a snapshot of the last three fiscal years. And a proposed budget, both the expenditures in the budget. As well as a percent increase or decrease that you might see on the current year. Think one area of attention that is worth looking at as a trustee is to look at the budget versus the expenditures. Over the past years, so when I compare and I work with building leaders, department leaders on the review of their budgets. When they make a proposal to Dr. Hamilton and me, I'm going to look also at what were their actual expenditures. Because just comparing budget to budget is not always going to give us the best picture of how that money is actually. Because just comparing budget to budget is not always going to give us the best picture of how that money is actually spent. What you'll notice here, big picture for facilities, is that over the 23 through 25 fiscal years, we are actually anticipated to overspend the budget by about 0.6%. What that means is that we have in, over the course of the year, we have made the decision to transfer additional funds from other areas where we had surplus to address some other facility needs. Or where we've seen donations and gifts, like the large gift that we've received, coming into the budget to help support unbudgeted expenses. The purpose of me sharing that would be to state is that the facilities budget is not one that we ever struggle to spend in. It, like steam and technology, are two areas where we always have needs and can always make additional purchases that would support the work of the district. They're the two broad areas where I think we, we will find close to 100% usage of budget every single year. The second document that you see as an attachment in yours and is also linked on the document here is a five-year utility history, which just break down, breaks down the utilities into their individual buckets from water, electricity, oil, propane and natural gas. The estimates that we've produced in the second to last column, some are probably better than others, for lack of a better way to describe it. We have not had a, a need to order considerable oil yet this year. But once we do, we'll, we'll be able to refine this prediction for the rest of this year. If there's a need to change this, we'll update it accordingly before we make our final administrative budget proposal. And then lastly, although not considered under the lens of like what's Ray's facility budget and the codes that are included in that $2.8 million, there are some related expenses that we talk about in great detail that do have a big impact on the budget. Most notably would be a transfer to the capital fund. Probably recall that in each year that I've been in this role and for most of the years prior to that, we had put in the operating budget, a transfer to the capital fund as a line item by the community supporting the budget and passing it. That effectively gives the authorization to transfer those funds from the operating budget to the capital fund to be expensed for capital projects. Over the last three years, we've transferred $5.2 million to the capital fund to support various projects. That would be the Sealy Place window renovation project, the Greenville library window renovation project, the tennis courts at Greenville, the future project on the APR windows, gutters and roof at Greenville, to name a few. We do not have, as of right now, we do not propose allocating any operating funds to that budget line next year. So that would be a reduction from over $2 million on that line last year to zero this year. The, the reasons for that are, are, they're multiple, but primarily be that we have many ongoing projects that will be taken care of by the bond. So in terms of ability and operational effectiveness, that's not realistic to take on large capital projects aside. And then secondly, the we have a capital reserve with approximately $4.25 million remaining in it that has been strategically built to address other capital needs. We've always known that once these bond projects started, we would significantly reduce this operating budget line. And we would start to use the bond funds in the capital reserve to address them. Ray had mentioned site paving at EHS phase one. It is probable that we will be coming to the board to discuss phase two as a potential use of capital reserve funds this year in the budget. But it's something we'll have to refine with the finance committee before we get there. Would that pass it back?
Okay. Thank you. Keeping in mind what Brian said about how we might all need to digest this a little bit. Does anyone have any immediate questions? I'll start the side this time.
I'm just personally curious, the rate that the district is charged for natural gas, oil, electricity, is that a, a rate that's set separately for upper school districts or government-related buildings as opposed to, for example, like what a residential rate would be? Or is it essentially the same?
It's going to be different for the utilities. And Ray, feel free to jump in on this. Let's talk about electricity first. So Con Edison would be the provider for all of your home electricity. We, we pay Con Edison as well. We also work with New York Power Authority, which is kind of the governing body that, that has oversight over that for the schools.
So the New York Power Authority, there's many school districts that are part of this consortium that buy electricity and straight. So we are part of the New York Power. So all of electricity is at a discounted rate, even those expensive expenses are discounted on gas, it's through Con Ed. Fortunately, we only have several accounts of gas, high school a little bit, the E building, Greenville, we have the ability to switch off when it gets too expensive for natural gas. We have fuel capabilities and we can switch over to oil. So, so we can control it a little bit, but ultimately at the end of the day, we need to boil this fire. It's a trickle, so we're going to get gas. So Con Ed is the provider.
And Ray.
Other opportunities to join different purchasing groups, but we don't know the reliability just that consortiums that we put together. And we really don't want to risk that at this particular point to save a few dollars.
Yeah, that was essentially the question is whether we're getting any kind of economies of scale by.
Correct.
Working with others.
And so on the electricity front, yes. When you look at the others, water, oil, propane, natural gas, no, not under purchasing agreement.
Heather, Tommy? All right. Thank you.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Excellent. So that means we are ready to move on to the consent agenda.
Yes.
So is there anything that anyone wants to take out of order?
Do you? If you refresh, you will note the item on the business agenda previously noted as number five concerning Triton has been removed. So your business items should now read K1 through K10.
Okay, okay. You wanted to take this out of order or did you want to just, I can just note it when I?
Okay.
So.
All right. Yeah. And, and Nareen mentioned in her report as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. Is the recommendation of the superintendent that the board approved the following recommendations by consent vote. Personnel matters I1 through I13, which includes recommendations for appointment to duties, clubs, activities and positions, as well as lease of absences and sidebar agreements. Student, student matters J1, which is the committee recommendation from the Committee on Special Education and business items K1 through K10, which is approval of budget transfer, budget amendments and authorization into, authorization to enter into various agreements.
Okay. Can I have a motion? First, Nareen, second, Josephine. First, I'll ask the rest of the board if anyone has any questions or comments. I have one myself, but I did want to point out, as Nareen mentioned, we have the, the Baldwin bequest that I guess two meetings ago, we, we mentioned that we were going to discuss how we would use that money and item K2 represents the decision that that, those funds are going to be used to update the playgrounds at the elementary schools. Mr. Baldwin worked at a camp for kids. We thought it was very appropriate to use the money in that regard. And one of the things that we aim to do, among other things, is make them more accessible. This camp was specifically for kids with special needs. So we thought it was a very fitting tribute to him to use the funds that way. And I wanted to inform the community that that decision had been made.
So I'll just add quickly on that. I think to be really specific, we have three playgrounds at Greenville. Two of the three are going to get a major overhaul, new equipment, new designs, to your point, with accessible opportunities for students as well. At Sealy Place, the front playground, the one that is closest to the basketball courts, we'll, we'll get a complete renovation and redo. As well as Ray had spoke to, over by the track in Blanford Field, there's some small playground equipment at the junior senior high school that will get some refurbishment in there. The, the donation itself doesn't cover the whole expense, but it does cover over two-thirds of that. And we have operational funds that we've targeted for repairs and otherwise that we can use to offset that. And so we're incredibly grateful. I know when Dr. Hamilton was first presented the opportunity, he wanted to make sure this is something that students could feel and need to be tangible. Shouldn't just be infrastructure, which is also needed, but something that every student could actually experience and feel. And, and I think to your point, it's very well aligned with his choice and mission in life. So.
And so I motioned already. Yes. Okay. So all in favor? Okay. The consent agenda has passed.
Before we close, Madam President, I'd just like to make a couple of quick announcements, if I may. Next board meeting, which is the January 28th board meeting, is designated as curriculum night. We will hear from our curriculum instruction and assessment office relative to district progress on district initiatives that impact teaching, learning and assessments. And also to further our efforts on Thursday, February 6th, at 6:30 PM, we will have a AI panel discussion. I sent a text out earlier today and we've had an overwhelming response to parents who are interested in serving on this panel. So I'll figure out some process to, to narrow that down. We have almost 30 parents who have volunteered to be on the panel. We certainly don't need a panel quite that large, since we will also have students and teachers and an AI consultant who will also be on that panel and folks from our tech team. So we'll figure out a way to narrow that down, but I'm excited and I hope you will all try to arrange your calendars to be able to attend that very lively discussion. And hopefully that information will help inform the Policy Committee on Developing Policies Around AI.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking, I think it's going to be fantastic. I'm excited for it. And I know everyone likes to hear about curriculum. So as Dr. Hamilton mentioned, our next meeting, curriculum night, will be Tuesday, January 28th, starting at 6:00 PM, immediately going into executive session and then returning to public session at 7:00 PM here in the LGI. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.